...meeting of the Board of Education. To order, thank you, I blanked, Amy. I went to look at Chris and I knew she went here. Chris, or Amy, could you call the roll, please? Mrs. Dethzel? Here. Mr. Engel?
Here.
Mr. Yoshimura?
Here.
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Dethzel?
Here.
Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, everyone has received a copy of the meeting minutes from January 8th. Do you have a motion for those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any additions or corrections? There we go. That's taken. Motion passes five to zero. Okay, now we have the approval of the tax budget hearing. That was also January 8th. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any questions or additions? Motion passes five to zero. And finally, the approval of the regular meeting minutes on January 8th. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any additions or corrections on the regular meeting minutes? Motion passes five to zero.
At this time, Lieutenant Officer Paul Latta Crowley, who will present the OSBA's World Recognition.
Good evening. Governor Kasich and the Ohio School Board Association have proclaimed January as school board recognition month. So, as citizens who serve children and represent our communities, individual school board members face complex and demanding challenges. Yet few people fully understand the spoke and far-reaching implications of the school board members' responsibilities. All of Ohioans should recognize the vital contributions of these men and women and focus attention on the crucial role these elected officials play in the education of our children. They make a difference for students. The job of the school board entails a host of difficult decisions that have to be made. School board members make policy, approve contracts with employees, choose curriculum, adopt budgets, and select a superintendent and treasurer to administer the district. They do all these tasks with the emphasis on what's best for the children that they serve. Being an effective school board member is no easy task, particularly in today's climate and culture. School board members need to be knowledgeable about many complex issues in education and society and carry out initiatives and directives from both federal and state governments. This January, local communities are invited to honor the contributions and dedication of their local school board members, those locally elected citizens whose decisions affect our children, what they learn, who will teach them, and what kinds of facilities house their classrooms. These men and women elected to establish the policies that provide the framework for our public schools. We would like to take a moment to say thanks for caring about our children's education and take a hat off to you, our school board members. And those members are: School Board President, Mrs. Anne Dethzel; School Board Vice President, Mr. Bob Engel; School Board Members, Joe Nachaburo, Mark Gilbert, and Jim Dethzel. So if you would, please join me in a round of applause. Now, as customary, we have a token of our appreciation for your service to our community. We have purchased books in your names that will go in each of our schools library. Unfortunately, the weather has delayed delivery of our books, so we don't have them to share with you tonight. But I can tell you, at the primary level, we have Mighty Mighty Construction Site. At the intermediate level, we have the book Wonder. I think you are familiar with the movie and the book. Those seven bright kids are eating it up. High school, Wonder Women, Twenty Five Innovators, and Adventurers and Travelers. Middle school, One Magic Trick. So there are exciting books in our libraries. If you'll pick out, then you may know that our kids will be reading them. So those books will be placed in the library. Also in front of you is a book on dealing with Alzheimer's and how do you handle that with children, whether it's grandma or grandpa. So Sue Slosser, who works for Arlington Gardens, has put that book together and provided us with copies for each of our libraries. So we thank her for that and we'll also put those in your honor. And food services, back with copies. So they have created try-as-peroies for each of you. We also had some thank you notes from our Houston Early Learning Center students in front of you, as well as a banner in front of him from the kid who's made Alzheimer's. Mr. Gayle. He also had his students write some thank you notes and they are there in front of your place as well. And then finally, Mrs. Wells, we have a little preview from Mothra Heights. Mr. Gayle, did I introduce you from Mothra Heights or from Wyden?
You said Wyden.
I did say Wyden. All right, thank you so much.
Shay, can you call Latta? Okay, I believe we have a special presentation with our master facility plan update.
Good evening. Welcome aboard. The team, Mr. Gilbert and Bishop Yoshimura. And I'm sure these guys are going to agree. You're coming in at a very exciting time for the service business and it's been a great road and for us and we appreciate it. Just a little introduction on Pete Becker, representing Scansey Megan as the project executive overseeing the project. Pretty involved on a day-in, day-out basis. Chris Sutter here is the senior project manager overseeing pretty much the entire project underneath me and having a lot of the chance.
A real quick update. Tonight on the agenda, you know there's a lot on your agenda, so we'll keep it brief. But what we try to do is every couple of months, come in, give an update where we're sitting on construction. We like to share important news. Tradition. We always like to keep you informed on the budget update. You know, it's a constant evolving process and, you know, we can get good snapshot on the great work that's going on with the collaboration with Chris and Todd and Amy and the core team and then the FAC team that we meet with on a, we're networking five months now on the Facility Advisory Committee. And then we'll give you an update on the timeline. So with that, I'm going to let Chris talk a little bit about where we are with construction and this wonderful weather we've had, so. All right, so this is our Mighty Mighty Construction Site at Pleasant Run Elementary School. So this, yeah, this area was shot and taken in December 2017. Everything still has a green tint to it, which was nice. In this picture, we show the roof essentially complete. The exterior skin, so the brick and air, the metal panels. That work is in progress. And actually, in this video, or in this picture, most of the brick is in the course. That's four and one month, and we had snow. So there's not a whole lot of difference on the exterior envelope in this picture versus the previous home. Most of our efforts between December and January have focused on the interior finishes. So what we've seen in that month, a lot of drywall partitions going on, are all being done, all being finished, paint, ceiling grid, a lot of mechanical roughlings, all of this stuff that you see, or you don't see above the ceiling, buried inside the walls. So that's where all of our efforts have been focused. It's a similar story at Scrubell Elementary. December, the roof's nearly complete. You see a little bit of masonry work going on in the academic wing and the top right hand corner. The full scaffolding set up. That's four and one month. And there's...
Still snow.
Yeah, still, it's going to Scrubell too. So this located, at this school, you see the masonry is actually put from the right side to the left side, all printed in. Temporary heat, a lot of masons painted to continue their work during the remaining months. Let's check out Taylor. So at Taylor, the roof again is complete. The masons are, at the outside of the academic wing, you see them just putting up scaffolding in that picture. Go forward one month. It also snowed. So here, the masons have finished a good amount of work on the backside of the building. The scaffolding is now above three stories high with temporary heat. And by now, all that brick is... So across all three job sites, the brick is pretty much complete in the academic wing. Masons have moved to Area A where we have cafeteria GM and admin sheet. And then on the interior, drywall's unfinished and the low level, main level, the paint is in process on the deck level. So we're making good progress and we're on schedule for a substantial expansion.
The one thing I feel, we want to let you know is, you know, the difference between the Northwest schools and other K-12 projects in the region, you know, there's a lot of colored metal panels that go on your projects and give it that not the typical K-12 like area of the school district and the region. You know, as those panels come in this month, we did a mock-up over on the corner of the backside of Pleasant Run Elementary. So, you know, as that work gets started, you'll really start to see the exterior transfer and it's really going to be a sharp looking building. You know, important news that we really think was key. We always said we wanted the roof dry in, you know, by December, you know, during the month of December, before the January, late December cold came. We met that, you know. There's always these little roofs like outside of stairwells that don't get complete, but, you know, those on the big picture of things, they really don't pull off your schedule. Tonight, we're going to bring forward the Corrayan High School GMP for mechanical upgrades for the air conditioning. And right now, that GMP is under budget. We'll talk a little bit about the budget and renovation project to help us go forward with the Pleasant Run Middle School AC project. We took bids on furniture just in last Thursday or Friday.
Last Thursday.
And right now, where we were sitting, based on the budget that was allocated for each of the schools, we treated it as an allowance and then we bought it during the project. We're still scrapping the numbers, but it looks like the total bids are coming in under budget, which will allow us to move forward and buy some alternates that were set up, so we buy additional furniture. So the furniture meetings have been going on for the last six, nine months, 12 months. And thank God, we're sitting on some crazy little chair to wobble around. But it's a great story and we're excited. Back in December, we met with the FAC, the Facility Advisory Team, and really focused the last two Facility Advisory Teams. The one back in October, November was on the technology of the buildings and then in December, really went and spent a lot of time going through how the security protocols in these buildings are really what needs to be for today's security standards. So where are we at on budget? I'm going to let Chris sort of give an update because he's my numbers guy. He's in the weeds and really, we've got a great story to tell here.
All right, so on the far left side of the screen, the blue, green, and red bars there that are present for the demolition project. So that's the demolition of Devis Elementary, Scrubell, Pleasant Run, Taylor, and Blowch. So our last couple progress reports here, that budget stayed steady around 2.6 million. It's ups and downs, it's pretty good. Moving on to the renovation projects in that set of ours. Really, I'm here at 9.9 million. We cut that down a little bit to 9.7 million and took back about $20,000. That was based off of some of the White Oak Middle School AC bids. So we saw some savings there. Then moving forward, we pushed it back up to the 9.9 million. We saw some additional opportunities and some scope we can put in place at Pleasant Run.
Here, right now, the renovation budget's... So White Oak, we took bids off the budgets of the project, came into variable, we applied that, reconciled some numbers in the green bar. Pleasant Run Middle School, right now, what we're looking at doing is before, we were just putting cooling in there and reusing the existing unit vent electric heat. So with the new budget numbers of where we're at, we're exploring the option with Chris McKee and some life cycle stuff is can we get rid of that electric heat to put more efficient, a better controlled hot water system in there, similar to White Oak and similar to what we're going to be doing at Corrayan High School.
All right, the third set of ours are the elementary school projects, Scrubell, Taylor, and Pleasant Run. We started out at 74 million, 74.1 million, and we dropped down to 73.2 million. That was the realization of savings from E-rate and other rebates such as LED lighting and Duke Energy Rebates. So that allowed us to drop the budget to $930,000.
And also, in the 73, 231 number, that's about the timeframe we went to a big... Remember the flooring studies where we came back with an increase and said, you know, we really toured, oh, I don't know how many different buildings. We came up with a new, a better flooring for the softer flooring in the schools so kids can sit on the carpet floors. And basically, that's in the 73, 231. And the update this month is...
Yeah, so we moved from the green bar to the red bar. That $400,000 that we had allocated to pay for that flooring upgrade, we're actually using the private contingency to pay for the funding. So no increase in the district, we'll change order, change increase for the budget. We're able to work hard with Chris on buyout savings and transfers and contingency. Basically, pick them up like the alternates we threw in at the beginning of the year. So really with that, you know, we have a process. The 86 was before on the far right, before the E-rays and Duke, the E-rays and the Duke rebates. 85 was for the increase in the flooring. And when we kicked that in, allocated some more dollars for the renovation for PRM. We're sitting about that 85, 3 number that we've been processing for a pretty long time. So basically, we're right on track. We're getting the scope back to the job and it's an exciting day in Northwest schools. The timeline, I'll let Chris talk about that. So the elementary schools are daylight sunburned as they approach summer. So we achieved that. Next up, we're focusing on the interior, so that'll be ongoing for the next couple of months. We actually plan on starting out an initial start for the mechanical units, the air handlers, so we can have conditioned air in time to bake. And then we plan on opening the class on August 21st. So those will be substantially completed next. The rest of the summer months will be used to carry on the existing schools, finish off the site packages, and move in furniture and administrative stuff to get people ready.
You know, a little bit about the org meeting. The calendar was set for the 18, 19 school year. We'd probably add two or three meetings with Chris and Todd, Amy, and some administrative staff on setting up for the summer school, the summer school year. So it'll be a great exercise. We've got a lot to do, planning for moving and stuff, but it's an exciting month.
Over at Corrayan High School, we have the GMP that we're looking forward to tonight for approval. We're on track. This being the approval, get going on construction and add our admission on for the start of school. At Pleasant Run Middle School, we're in the process of evaluating design options that keep us suited earlier. So that process will be taken off next month. Then on the event demolition project, so we knocked down Devis last summer. That was completed in September. And then the rest of these schools will be knocked over this coming summer. It will continue through August and November. So with that, you know, we really like, as much as the board, but really truly thanks for the community for the support of the project as well. Any questions we can ask now or talk later?
Exciting. I think you've been doing tours bi-weekly or maybe we brought a ton of herbs through in the last couple of months. For the time where the job looks like, you know, while it's a scene and going, and all of a sudden the kids are here and then you start seeing... Well, we used to punch it greens, oranges, and blue paint out of the wall now. So it's, I started asking them, they were excited.
Did you find your hangout that was on the Word agenda?
Okay.
On like page five, there were some overages that looked like on bids. Can you explain that because it was a little confusing?
On page five, I was looking at, when I was here with Todd and Chris, I was trying to figure out if... I think page five I was looking at was the GMP schedule. So it shows the budget, the current GMP, all approved GMPs, and then it shows the GMP for this one. And there's a thing called the cost of work is like 2 million. It says the contract is like 2.16 or something like that. That is, the cost of work isn't the budget. It's the definition of the cost. It's subcontract work, yet in our staff, yet in our fees and stuff. And that's what, the cost of work and the definition of the GMP amendment is not the contract amount. It's what the fee and contingency is tied to that adds on top of that in this contract summer. I could sit down and give a tip. But the Corrayan High School GMP, the GMP is about 150 grand under the current budget we've been carrying for that project specifically. Over and above the electrical upgrades, the brick cleaning and the facade work that was done with the previous GMP we brought back in June.
Right.
Probably without explanation at first glance, it looked like we were only 2.6 over. I'm like, God, we've got to recover that. I think we were carrying like 2.6 for the entire, 2.6, 2.7 for the entire Corrayan High School budget for subcontracted work. And I can... The good news is, you know, we're able to keep that 99 we're carrying now and we took some money and applied it right into PRM as a, just so we get through that one more stage. We had a conversation today about renovations, some of the renovation scope, you know, with the state came down for our quarterly meeting. Every penny that we can put into co-funded work that's part of the original assessment, the district, it increases that reimbursement that we can use for applying towards the future projects for the Corrayan Elementary Middle School campus on the altar. And I could sit down, Bob, with you and whoever, so we could sit down. I always, you know, I always just read them and that's what it looked like to me. And that's a lot of money. And we, we're on that scale.
I think the other question that he brought up, if you look at the end of your GMP, it says project completion, Corrayan High School, 931. I'm afraid that it wouldn't be, but Chris just solved all that. It will be up and running prior to the summer. Because if it's not up in August, that's missing out on this part of the year.
You know, it's a push to get these summer jobs done and, you know, we, like in a gymnasium, we can't even go in there until the school's done. The goal is, we want Aces on them just like at White Oak. We want, we want the kids in there with their thumbs up over by the air conditioner, they're happy for it. But the truth is, once school's in session, then we roll back to second shift and we're doing balancing, we're doing commissioning, we're doing checkout. We're, you know, putting the tweaks and ripples on it. Sometimes summer schedules, it's just, it's tough to get all that done and, you know, so. Very similar to White Oak.
Right, yeah. Because like, it says completion date, like in September. But then, but then it says the classroom work and everything was done by like 8:10, so. But that's, I mean, as long as there was air conditioning in the classroom, the work's only asked for. I want to just say a couple things with Mark and Joe being new. When we originally passed Bonn Levy, part of the promise when we passed Bonn Levy was a cold, air-conditioned Corrayan Elementary home. There was no promise of anything else. Because of the savings that Duncan and Scansey got put together for us and the work with the architect SHP, because of savings and being under budget, which we have been the entire time, we have been able to additionally air-condition Corrayan Middle School, White Oak Middle School, Corrayan High School, and the rest of PRMS. So on the inside, you have PRMS air-conditioned. The outside, you can't. So there's been big savings and so... Just so everybody knows, they don't just get these emails and just look at them. They call, they ask questions. It's our job to find out answers. Great questions by all of them, but I think it's something that Mark and Joe needs to be aware of. We bid at one price, we've had huge savings. And to start August with every school being air-conditioned, hopefully, some things could happen. It's great to hear.
We have big ups every now and then too. So most of the stuff is so rigorous. I'm pretty proud of our pre-com team. We're going with the district and the design team because we're just, we're just taking this thing to the nth degree. At one point, there was a water connection with a camera. And that didn't resolve and it was, I think it was an old water connection that needed to be updated and then it worked out. As far as the new water service now is coming out. Originally, it was going back through the, out through the back. There's that, what was that, Marina Drive? And then there was issues with, there's some existing valves on Marina Drive, so when the design was taking it out that way, you know, waterworks, there's been a lot of changes in waterworks. And so now we're just taking it out due to a Sturgill Road and...
I think it's going on right now or it's not even in place.
So within the construction limits and we'll be transferring out to Marina Drive. We talked about possibly throwing the transportation building hooking into that line. Has anyone checked into that?
Not yet.
That would be, that would be huge. Right now, we're going to focus on getting the elementary up and running all that because with waterworks, I don't want to throw the penny caraples. It's been a great, this has been one of my... I've been working in K-12 districts for the last 17 years and, you know, I'm about ready to go buy a house over all the boom or something. I'm still a part of the district now.
May I ask some questions? We always love having you come and update, great communicator and...
Well, we're always open for touring, you know, so feel free, like we have every other kind of variety of kind of tours going on, but, you know, Pam and Jim and Bob and Todd, they all have my contact. And it doesn't, I mean, if you say, hey, we'd like to come tour your jobs, we'll find time to work there. Especially, I want to keep that open for interpretation. It's always there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Joe, do we have a necessary update?
Yeah. Let me just tell you or warn you folks, everybody, that this is my first time, so life's humble tools and stuff. Please forgive me. Okay, there are two major things here. The House Bill 170, the Computer Science Curriculum. It's optional, not mandatory. Governor Kasich signed this bill on December 22nd. School Board of Education to adopt content standards and model curriculum for computer science for grades K through 12, including introductory and advanced classes in grades 9 through 12. Schools are not required to use these, but may use them in whole or in part. The unit of computer science may substitute for a unit of math or science, but not biology or life science. Advanced courses may take place, the place of Algebra II, but districts must inform the student and parents that this may have adverse effect on college admissions. So they've got to be real careful with this whole thing. Computer science teachers must, one, be licensed; two, have a licensed endorsement in computer technology or passing score on a computer science content exam; or three, be licensed educators who qualify or passing score on a computer science content exam, or three, be licensed educators who qualify for a supplemental teaching license for computer science. The second thing here is the Ohio Teaching Evaluation System Bill with duly challenge changes. Senate Bill two six, no, two one six, Education Deregulation Bill, which includes these changes, was introduced in October. Senate Bill two forty, introduced by Senator Peggy Lender on December twelfth. Revised Code thirty-three, one nine, uh, point one one one. Both bills remove student growth measures from the O T E S evaluation, but require that a high quality of student performance measures may be used. Two, the requirements of professional growth plans for skilled and accomplished teachers in off-years. Three, delete the option to permit an accomplished teacher to submit a project to reduce observation. The only substantive difference is the deadline for the local board to adopt a modified policy. Revised Code thirty-three, one nine, point one one two, dash Senate Bill two sixteen, removes the requirement to use high value, eh, hi, excuse me, value-added data as the use of student assessment instruments and prohibits use of shared attribution data. Senate Bill two forty requires at least two measures of high-quality student data, which must incorporate value-added when applicable and may be used as evidence in five domains. It prohibits use of both shared attribution and student learning objectives. Both bills require the Ohio Department of Education to provide guidance on how high-quality student data may be used as evidence in evaluation and require, uh, the O D E to develop guidance on how information obtained from alternative framework tools. And these tools are such as student surveys, student portfolios, peer review evaluations, teacher self-evaluation, and other locally determined tools. That's all I got. Um, I talked to a counselor over at Corrine High School and, uh, we talked about this a little bit, and I would tell you that it, when they go to the revised code and, and have substitutes for certain things, um, it all sounds sane and good and that the possibilities for the positive aspect is that the kid will graduate as long as he adheres to the, the stipulations involved here. So I'm really excited about this because it goes back to the school system and we've got the blessings of the Ohio Department of Education.
Thank you, Joe. And today, Mark, is there any achievement they have on report?
Um, actually, I met with Jennifer today, uh, and we are working on putting together, finishing out this season and putting together a, um, program for next year and, um, that was my first meeting with her, so. And tonight we have.
Yeah. Yeah, tonight we have students, teachers, and administrators from Corrine Middle School, Pleasant Run Middle School, and White Oak Middle School. They will be speaking about how the district's one-to-one technology initiative has positively impacted instruction this school year. Can we introduce everyone? We'll be listening to Silver.
Uh, good evening. Um, I'm lovely Silvernagle, I'm a curriculum supervisor, uh, here in the district. And last year I was tasked with coming up with, um, a district technology plan that would help us look at instructional technology for the next three to five years and what our vision was for that and what our goals were. So one of the big goals that we came up with was to have a three-year plan for going one-to-one. So within three years, we want to make sure that every student has a device, either a computer or in most cases a Chromebook, um, that they have access to during the school day. So this year was our implementation of kind of phase one. We are officially one-to-one in grade six through eight at our three middle schools this year. Um, and so tonight we have students, a teacher, and two of our principals here to share with you how classes changed. Because through this whole process, our whole vision behind White Oak one-to-one, and you hear other districts are doing it, in a lot of cases they're just buying devices and handing them to students or teachers and just saying, oh, we keep doing the same thing. But we really wanna focus on instruction and looking at, um, what does the technology allow us to do that we couldn't do before, um, without the technology. Uh, an example is, um, we're looking at, um, doing the E L A adoption in grade six through eight and the product that we're looking at is mostly based online. And we truly believe it is the best thing for our students, but if we didn't have this one-to-one initiative, we couldn't even look at possibly adopting that because it wouldn't be an option for us. Um, additionally, we would like to move in more of a project and problem-based learning, um, style in our classes. And so you have to have, um, the devices so that students can do research, so that students can collaborate with each other and create, um, in new ways, um, that we didn't yet do when we were students. So, um, tonight, to present to you, we have from Pleasant Run, Eric Dunn, the principal, two of his students, Matthias Johannes, who's in seventh grade, and Nakira Jones, she is in eighth grade. Then next we'll have Kevin Gale, the principal at White Oak Middle School. We have seventh grader Brayden Hauser to speak to you, and, um, sixth grader William Owuzu will speak to you. Lastly, at Corrine Middle, we have Kristen Hopk, she's a teacher, she's gonna show you some of the innovative things she's doing in her class. We have, um, seventh grader Devon Caldwell to speak, and, um, seventh grader Grace Gaynor to also speak to you. So I'm gonna turn it over to them. We'll let Eric start from Pleasant Run.
I really appreciate you, uh, having us out today to share the one-to-one technology. We have a lot of great things to talk about. Um, first of all, we could do more members of Eric Dunn, the principal, Pleasant Run Middle School tonight, so finally, for the face of the name, it was good to see you guys tonight. Um, one-to-one, I feel like has gone really well. Uh, we had, as to be expected, end of October, beginning of September, it's kind of dicey as we work through the kinks. But I really feel like probably from October first until, until right now, it's been full war and we haven't really had a lot of issues, so it's been a really good start to the year. I do wanna give a lot of credit to, uh, Pleasant Silvernagle, uh, Matt Fisher, who was in there earlier. They really busted their tails to make sure that this goes off right. I think that's probably plenty more hours this year than the last five years of mine, making sure that everything's up and running. Um, so I do appreciate everybody's patience with that, but we feel like it's been a really big success of our first semester, um, at least at Pleasant Run Middle School. Um, instead of being one on and on about it, we think we bring two of, uh, PRMS best of brides out here, so I do wanna bring in the Kyra and Matthias. Former Matthias was at B P A competition today, so he's gonna sleep well tonight. He has a P A all day. He's like, what's your name? What's your number? You're doing, we have been working all day and then have to come present for the board, so. Um, and the Kyra is, is one of our seven grader's as well. She was runner-up at R C L B just a month ago, so. Um, the Kyra, we'll start with you and then Matthias will help you go after the Kyra, so I'll go present, um, Kyra, yeah.
So the homeboy stuff was, you're gonna leave, uh, you're gonna ask on there, if you, if you, pretty much inherit the notes for some study and we also play education again so that we can communicate with each other through our educational and forward learning. We obviously do, we do ask, uh, if we respond, but we do not, I mean, we do it on, so I can be part of it. And do I, as I said, we, like, last year when we didn't have our own company, we didn't, didn't, we didn't, we didn't do it all fast because we had a lot of, uh, colleagues and other teachers, and we didn't have enough. And it allowed us to do more time for our state tech team, like our math and our O C D, because last year, I was, so we didn't have the, the, so it was hard for us to, like, do our person all at one time. We would have to, like, switch up and then do it different weeks and it was really complicated. And a lot of our assignments are on, on this issue, and it makes it easier for us to do our work. So we don't have to keep switching from site to site a little bit, and it saves us time and paper, so we don't have to, just try and make this thing easier. And also, it's many things, uh, because some students learn better on the computers than others do writing on paper. And it helps them organize their thoughts better and put them on, other ones on paper. And some people type out their work because maybe they aren't really handwriting and so it makes it easier for them to write down. And some students like to do their own writing, those, like, even just writing or just reading the talk, like, having the teacher guide them. We also need to, from the, and, uh, questions that we might have, since they're the teacher, they're available or they're, so we just work it out. And the teachers have to be, like, accountable at having, like, different responsibilities for what we do and how we say to them and that. And also, it also work at our, maybe because instead of the teacher, you teach them that's like one thing. We use our computers to, move our own, if there's something that's not very good in others, so it's just easier for us to work at how we want. But we do our group practice and they help to, like, accommodate our students and just do, um. Um, so my professors, my teacher, he's in class, classroom, uh, whole classroom, uh, physical one. So they can try and put in what assignment they want to have. So if you consider while we're trying to have all the signs seem sanitary or accurate, and go to the class, we can decide what's in the screen. Also, the look here is almost in, look for what you're not, just, just, in the class. Because if paper is, it can be turned off, it's, it's in the, in the class. Also, there are a lot of projects that we couldn't do before and did much longer because we didn't have the resources. So then, but if you had a big class trying to do a class, other, other teachers did a lot of homework, they're, 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 all the time. Also, the teachers have a lot of stuff to speak, we can't stand this. So, uh, we have, every other week, we're, we're, but if you have a teacher, you're, this time, we're pretty, uh, this time. Also, classroom, it's a quicker way to manage yourself, and if you're in, the teacher focuses on you, you know, and you're in. And also, if you forget a design, you don't wish that you had seen it.
I'm the architect of the Yale White Oak Middle School principal, and just three years ago, I was principal at Wolfman Heights Elementary, kind of comparing and contrasting the technology. Um, you know, at Wolfman Heights Elementary, and two of these students are gonna present here, they came from Wolfman Heights and were there and have experienced it, I'll let them talk about it, but. Um, we had one computer lab and each room had, um, anywhere from four to six Chromebooks in there. And so as one of the students already mentioned, you know, getting testing done took multiple weeks. Um, hopping into White Oak Middle School, um, every student had a Chromebook, um, and so testing could be done all at once. And so you don't have to shut down and you can create all these special schedules. Uh, this is some great stuff, they go on, snap a few pictures. Um, I was, uh, really interested to see, uh, I was in P E classes one day, to see students pull out their Chromebooks. They're in a P E class to, uh, log their heart rate. Um, they have a Google Classroom set up, the P E teachers do, where they, um, research different athletes and they have assignments where they do some writing incorporated in the P E, so it's just about, you know, less than five minutes at the beginning of class, but it's amazing how quick that a kid gets, peers out, log their heart rate logged. And so there's a lot of math and writing involved there in, in the gym classes. That's pretty cool. Um, this is just another classroom where they're, um, working, oftentimes as the student mentioned, on the Google Classroom, submitting those assignments. Uh, it's just a lot further along with the one-on-one-to-one. Teachers are more willing to hop in because every student has access to a machine. You don't have to worry about preserving them or moving them on car, back and forth. Every student has one, boom, ready to go. Um, and a couple other classrooms were, uh, in the music room, they, they log their practice. Um, this is a band class and they're logging their practice minutes in the Google Classroom as well as doing, um, they, there's, they listen to music and then play it back. There's another room off of the same group where they go and do that in small groups. So pretty much any room you go in at White Oak, you're gonna see, you know, technology being used in a variety of different ways. It's, it's just amazing the opportunity that that opens up to our students, having a, a Chromebook at their disposal each and every classroom of the day. They come up in the morning, in the morning homeroom, and they put it back in the afternoon homeroom. They don't take them home. Um, they, they even know that they had a charge overnight, and it's been great. So, um, I'll turn it over to Brayden and then William, who are gonna just share a little bit about their experiences at White Oak using the technology. So Brayden, come on.
Um, as Mr. Beal said, I was through Wolfman Heights from preschool, I'm in fifth grade, and I'm in, uh, White Oak Middle School, White Oak for a year in sixth grade. So I didn't just figure out how, uh, Wolfman Heights was without computers, figured out how White Oak was without computers. Um, my name is Brayden Hauser from White Oak Middle School. I think that Northwest Little School District, having the ability to own one-to-one computer access can be good and bad for certain reasons. First off, having access to computers in school costs a lot during research, but when we didn't have one-on-one, it was very difficult. Students would have to search through dictionaries and take more time while waiting for other computers to be available instead of everyone being able to quickly finish researching in organized times. On the other hand, as you probably have seen in the past, most kids have the temptation to play games as soon as they see their technology. But in order to keep that from happening, Northwest Little School District has a designed secure network to track all websites any students have been on. This is very helpful in competition. One-on-one computer access also helps students learn responsibilities. The teachers allow students to take care of the computers and put them in the right place every morning and afternoon. I believe that this really helps students to take care of, take care of things and respect things that aren't theirs. These are my beliefs on one-to-one access to computers and thank you.
My name is William Owuzu. I'm glad having our Chromebooks one-to-one because it makes me feel more responsible than at my old school, Wolfman Heights. At Wolfman Heights, we used to have, um, Chromebooks once a week. Now at White Oak, we take our Chromebooks to, to each of our classes. When the teacher allows us, we go into a pool of classrooms or study rooms. We also go into N W L D, Harvard's room, to check on grades and what we are missing. And that is why I'm so grateful for the word education-wise, like, in school.
All right, I'm Chris Cox, I'm in seventh grade, social studies, teacher at Corrine Middle School. This is from over, this is right here, so this is Deb, and there are some exhibits this year that I recommend you come along. Um, so what I wanna talk about is something called logic branching that we're using in my classroom. Um, it uses Google Forms, which is just like a quiz, um, so students have been quizzed at like for a while. But basically, there's a new technology called logic branching. And basically, what it is, is an online quiz that adjusts the questions based on students' answers. Which is really neat because that's something that wouldn't have been possible if you're just taking a paper pencil test. It actually adjusts it to differentiate based on how well the student's doing or, uh, what they need help with. Um, so this allows the teachers to differentiate quizzes and that provides for mediation, review, or extension challenge questions if needed. So basically, how it works, um, you create a question on the Google Form. Um, so this is a basic multiple choice question, and then if a student gets the answer correct, it brings them to, like, maybe an extension question or just, um, a piece on the test. Um, but if they get it wrong, um, I can incorporate, like, video clips to help review the information. You could have more basic questions, like, this is the same question, but it's a lot more simple. So giving us another chance to maybe do just an understanding of the wording of the original question, so bringing it down into a more simplified way. Um, or I can incorporate pictures or charts or little excerpts, um, help the student review the information. So how it helps students, um, makes testing differentiate it, so each student receives actual, like, individualized instruction, which is something that's really neat that even in the testing situation, students can have that differentiated instruction instead of just like their improvement activities or their, that to reset their whole presentation. Um, it gives more opportunities for students to learn from their mistakes and gives them instant feedback. And some students can tell they're doing questions wrong because the questions get a little easier, but then it's all not lost because when they're relearning the material, they're getting a chance to actually learn from mistakes and earn that thing with their points. Um, then on the other side of it, it gives more opportunities for challenge questions and activities. Um, and that, it's a variety of different activities. Um, so on a paper pencil test, you'd never be able to show a video or incorporate, like, hands-on activities or go to another link. Um, so on a paper pencil test, you'd never be able to show a video or incorporate like hands-on activities or go to another link for them to like read an article or, or a website. Um, so I think this is really neat. I think it's technology that's really helpful. It's useful for me to like actually give individualized instruction to my students. So I love it. Um, I wanted to give my students and other changes to say really quickly what they thought about it as well.
Can I ask you a question first?
Oh, absolutely.
What is the introduction, you said feudalism there?
Yeah.
What would you, what would, how would you, um, have the kids for the quiz?
So this would be one of our T B T assessments where we're doing these assessments where we're teaching the content. Um, maybe through like notes and different hands-on activities, a couple of weeks worth of instruction. And then this would be like a test just to see how well they understood the material. So they've already been introduced to all the content they've, or notified about this quiz or this study. Um, and it gives a chance for them to go back and kind of fix those mistakes, things that they might not have picked up the first time.
Thank you. How did you prepare, uh, for this new technology?
Um, just for logic branching or for one-on-one?
One-on-one.
Um, it's a lot. I mean, just going online and just finding ideas, learning from each of our coworkers at some of the best resorts. So at Colerain Middle School, we do peer observations where we actually go into other classrooms, see what they're doing. We have tackle, so I have two things that I decided over the summer that I really wanted to focus on. And I'm trying to just build that up as best that I can. Um, it's definitely a learning curve, some things that you tried, it doesn't work that great. Um, but other things are, they're winning and so you just keep trying things.
What resources could we provide that would, maybe help to a long way?
Um, honestly, I feel like the first time, great with that. I think each building has been doing a good job. Um, like I'm on the task committee at Colerain Middle School. And so we're presenting different, like we have a Google Classroom of our own for all the teachers. And so we're posting any time that we find something new, we just post, uh, the links to those different activities and share it with the rest of our, um, the rest of our coworkers. Like, we're continuing to do that and continuing to provide us the resources, like having these computers is comfortable. Any other questions?
Do the students, uh, receive any type of typing classes to go with this or?
Not typing in particular, um, maybe it's not that, you can, you know, it's a, uh, and sometimes it's a challenge. I know that in my past, I noticed on my midterm, but typing is not that great. Um, so now I have, their daily warmups are on the computer and so they're getting the practice with the typing. And I feel like it's getting much better, faster at it, they're remembering to actually use punctuation, pencil letters. I mentioned this a few times.
That's part of that long-term plan, is looking at, what do we teach them as far as technology goes at what grade? We just, probably four years ago, we were teaching typing in ninth grade. And now it needs to be literally at K one-two, because in the third grade, they've got that third grade reading guarantee test for typing essays in the third grade. So if you can really see the shift, and, you know, these kids didn't necessarily have that later in elementary, but over time, we'll see our kids getting those skills.
It's definitely a improvement. And it's great to see how they're being really comfortable with the technology and their typing's improving, they're, they're really, that's fabulous, which is, yeah. Any questions? All right, so I'd like, um, my students to actually just say just a couple of things. Um, just about their opinions about logic branching and then also one-on-one, if that makes sense.
So I like the logic branching because if I were to get a question wrong, it could take me back to like a video or picture to help me understand the question, it could understand me.
Um, I thought the logic branching test is very informative, because if you got one wrong, like then you said you'll take it back, where it was at. So like it's based on your knowledge and all of the, like for the majority of the part, all of our, all of the same questions are different, which has cheating involved. And for just like one-on-one, it's been like, even last year, you didn't have a, it has seemed a lot different. Because now if we have the quiz, you're like, what's different? And then there is, uh, I, I think the one-on-one is very good.
Someone has their names again.
I'm Grace Taylor.
Okay. Thank you.
Good job, guys.
We could have the adults standing right in front of the screen out here in front, and then the students in front of them, that'd be great. And then we're gonna all get up and take a picture out in the hall as well. Obviously, the shorter students will be in the first row, and the taller ones in the second row.
Sure, you gotta be in front of them.
In the middle, and on the, the chewed tap, so it's still gonna go a little bit. And looking at me, and this goes on three and a half, okay? One, two, three, and a half. Let's try one more. One, two, three, four. There we go. But they transfer onto a website, which is, you know. Real quick before you go out in the hall, I just want to tell all the students what an awesome job you did presenting. We love having students come over. I also wanted to congratulate you on your spelling bee. Nice job. Okay, this time we'll move into the other tech update.
I'm just bringing up first and ever after, our, uh, professor, didn't give anybody a quick update? I don't look quick, but nothing.
It will be quick.
That's okay.
All right, first of all, thank you so much for having me, uh, this evening. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be pretty brief, I didn't bring any students or, or teachers along with me this evening. Um, but I did want to welcome Mr. Gilbert and I'm gonna have to look at the spelling now. Yoshimar?
Mr. Yoshimura.
Okay, Mr. Yoshimura.
You can call me Yoshia.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much, we're excited to have you part of the board and I want to do everything I can to let you guys, uh, know as much as you can about how about their faculty, faculty of our district. So, um, a couple of things, um, just to give an overview right now, we're, we're in full swing with our recruitment process. Um, and what that looks like in sophomores that were, um, introducing to Butler Tech, um, to do any kind of two-year program. Uh, where they join a cohort of students and make it through two years of a program. Um, Northwest is unique that we have fall-time, uh, two-year programs onsite at Northwest High School and Colerain High School. Um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna cast over, if this is okay. Is that all right?
Good for those.
And, uh, there's, um, her copies as well. Um, so we have fall-time programs, uh, like I said, at Colerain and Northwest. Uh, we have three, uh, business school pathways, we have three introductory, uh, programs. And when I'm, when I'm saying programs, I'm also referencing the number of teachers that we have in the district. Um, we have four family consumer science teachers, two of them who teach polinary quizzes. Uh, they have two career-based interventions, which are work-study programs. And then we have three middle school, um, programs, one at each middle school. Some of the students that were here today actually competed in Business Professionals of America when, uh, Mr. Dunn recognized V P A. Uh, that's what he was referring to, uh, which is at the bottom of my page there. Um, most of our programs have some type of industry credential, which is obviously going to help students with graduation options. Um, all of them have some type of credit, college credit, um, whether it's transcribed C C P, college credit plus credit, C takes proficiency credits or articulations. And that's all determined by the university, unfortunately. I wish we could say we have some kind of credit, but, um, universities, they pay that for us. Um, but an update on recruitment, so, um, with the two-year programs, we are always, um, trying to educate the students and Northwest does an amazing job with this. Uh, educating the students as much as possible about all the options that they have. Um, so right now, at Northwest High School, we have about fifty-seven percent of Northwest sophomores who have applied for Butler Tech program. And that means they either apply for our Butler Tech program on either the Northwest or Colerain campus, or at one of our, um, offsite campuses. And then at Colerain, there's about fifty-one percent of the Colerain High School sophomores applying for Butler Tech program that live on and off campuses. Um, if you want more specific data, I'm happy to provide that, but that isn't ever real. Um, also, I just want to highlight two hundred things that hopefully you'll be hearing a lot about. One of the things is the students have the opportunity to participate in our C T S Os and report to career high school student organizations, and that's like the skills of Butler Tech. So, um, or the, the sports. Uh, so students have the opportunity to compete with their skills. And, um, with the middle school students today, so they've been in computer info tech class where they do learn some keyboarding, and they did take that class and they sat very great. And, uh, today they were competing in Business Professionals of America. So everything from speech, prepared speech, um, uh, website design, graphic design, where they get to redesign logos for their school district. Um, and so that'll happen, we go to that Northwest, we had seventy-five middle schoolers. Um, and from each of the competitions, two students will be able to go on stage. Um, and, and that's a great opportunity for kids to build their confidence. Um, and again, they're getting excited about competing with skills, which is excellent. Um, we have a variety of different C T S Os that are all here in the, in Northwest District and throughout Butler Tech, I have them listed there. Um, you'll be hearing, it's, it's C T S of season for us right now, it's our season where we're competing. So hopefully you'll hear a lot of very positive news about our kids going to national competitions and, um, even international competitions. So that's something that Butler Tech supports financially, like I said, it's really our support of our organization. Um, and finally, I just want to highlight an event, um, that we had on Friday. I know Mr. Mulling was able to make it out and Mr. Gator made it out as well, and several others, Mr. Gary. Um, and of course, Mr. Dutzel was able to make it out to our Pursuit the Machine program, which is at Colerain High School. Um, we had over sixty businesses there, um, that came out. And, um, this is also a skills competition, so students were given a task, um, to, uh, take a, a piece of metal that they had a machine and transform it into some type of part. So they were given a plan, they had to mill and lay the CNC program. Um, and so while they were doing that in a timed setting, all the businesses that are looking to hire these students monitor their progress. Uh, we had one student who had twelve job offer, job offers, twelve, in like an hour and a half. Uh, my superintendent, uh, Mr. Graff said, I don't think I've had twelve job offers in my entire career, so, um, it, it was great. It was really a great, um, event and we have more and more participation. These businesses support our district, um, and I'm not saying our district, I mean Northwest, local and Butler Tech together. Um, they do so much for our students, so I have a couple, W C G O did a new story, Fox nineteen did a new story, The Enquirer, I think New York Cross and Business Courier all came out to, um, to really promote all the great things that we're doing here in the district. So super excited about that and we'll keep doing things like that. And again, I want to welcome you guys, of course, you're welcome to any of our campuses that, at any time, um, including our offsite campuses, because we have a million other options there too. So, all right.
Yeah, I wanted to kind of follow up with that with Joe and Mark, that if we can maybe get up there and go to D R L and the Bioscience and the Natural Science Center. Get you guys up there to see exactly what we're offering and what our kids are having a chance to do, so. Yeah, just let me know when we can get up there and we'll give a tour of the place and go from there.
But anytime you want to come over to, to any of our programs at Northwest and Colerain, I'd be happy to show you around. The booklets that I passed out are just for our, our local programs here. Um, we don't really have a guide like that. Um, one thing you guys may notice, the Butler Tech logo has officially changed, so we're just starting to get accustomed to that now. I, um, I put that at the top, so you'll be seeing more of that and that's all I have, so I really appreciate you having me here.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kristen. Okay, if there's any reports from a foreign organization, do I have anybody from certificate of their license? Classified? Any reports from school-related organizations? I have not received any request for community communications, so I, you.
All right, first item is a fiscal item, it's financial reports of the treasurer, December two thousand seventeen. Treasurer and superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the financial reports as listed.
So moved second.
It's been moved in second, are there any questions? Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is a classified personnel item, classified retirements and resignations. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved second.
Moved in second, any questions regarding classified resignations and retirements? Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is a general business item, it's G M P two point four, Colerain High School mechanical upgrades renovation resolution. This guaranteed maximum price, G M P is for upgrading the mechanical system, addition of air conditioning at Colerain High School. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the attached resolution for G M P two point four, mechanical upgrades at Colerain High School for the attached option.
So moved second.
Moved in second, are there any questions regarding mechanical operating, renovation of Colerain High School? Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is vendor contracts. Superintendent treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the vendor contracts as listed.
So moved second.
Moved in second, any questions regarding vendor contracts? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is certificate license personnel items. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve this certificate license personnel items as listed.
Second.
Moved in second, questions regarding certificate and license personnel items?
Just a little, uh, all of the, I don't know, I think, I don't know, everybody seemed to get out, for about three seasons. So I, I hope that, uh, I hope that things improve for, they look good on there.
Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is classified personnel items. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified personnel items as listed.
So moved second.
Moved in second, questions regarding classified personnel? Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is curriculum and instruction, it's a high school program of study. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the program of study as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, are there any questions regarding the high school program of study? Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is a miscellaneous item, it is a revised board meeting calendar for two thousand eighteen. It has been adjusted to add a regular meeting on February fifth, and then we will change February twenty-sixth meeting to a work session. Uh, most likely, it, it will say to be determined for time, but it will be six o'clock, that will provide better for you. And it will probably be a, a kind of educational service, so I'll get more information out. But this is the only other adjustment and just a reminder that all meetings start at six o'clock.
Is there, is there a Butler Tech, uh, named this one yet, or something?
No, we have that, we sometime will do that in October and November, but I'll get with John and we can even let you guys pick the building. We try to go to a new one, it's gotta be the Bioscience, I don't think we've had any wrestling for a meeting.
We have, then, we have, well, and then they'll have the adult, the, the sort of that, that'll be the brand new and open.
Yes, that's possibly, I would agree.
Possibility of one down there too.
Are they gonna have any rides?
No rides.
Not even a slide, not even a slide.
Especially those.
Insurance hammers are. What do you want to say?
So moved second.
Moved in second, any questions?
Let's talk very deep, whatever you like, I'll send them in.
Okay. Motion passes five to zero.
All right, the next item is certificate license personnel. It is certificate license staffing and district, district organization plan. It is certificate licensed staffing and district, district organization plan. And Dr. Stephanie Kessler, our Human Resources Department fires up for the new presentation.
Who was tardy and I strongly apologize. Did not take note of the six thirty. Change in schedule. Todd said don't say anything, but of course he called me out, so I apologize.
Okay, I forgot to tell Kristen that it was, uh, eight, six thirty instead of seven. I already told her. I forgot.
So I tried to sneak out and have dinner with my family and it didn't work so well. So I apologize for my tardiness, but I'm glad I made it here in time. So first and foremost, I want to apologize for perhaps the scatteredness of this presentation. I tried on multiple occasions to create a PowerPoint to walk through, um, the things I'm going to speak about today and I found that it wasn't going to work very well. And so I'm going to present, I ask for some grace if I tend to, I like a sequential organizational plan for our presentation. This one may go a little cyclical, so I may have to go back and come back to where I am. Okay? So first and foremost, I want to thank you for being able to present to you tonight. As many of you are aware, we are facing, um, deficit spending in the next several years. And so the district has been working and looking at cost efficiencies. Not cuts, we're not looking at cuts, but we do want to look at cost efficiencies. So the process really began for us probably about four years ago when, um, Andrew Jackson was our superintendent. We began looking at everything that we were doing in the course of educating our children and trying to decide what were the most important things? Where did we have some savings that we could make without cutting positions? So four years ago, we began a process of looking at, do we need administrators in the buildings over the summer? Okay, so we thought, yes, we do need some administrators in the building, but perhaps we don't need all administrators in the building. So we began making some subtle changes, not subtle, pretty drastic changes to our calendars. And so administrators at the time were working two hundred and forty-seven days, which is approximately two hundred and thirty-seven workdays and ten vacation days they were paid for. So that was considered a two hundred and forty-seven day contract. Well, we decided it may not be the most efficient to have two or three assistant principals in the building for the same period of time. Maybe we could look at some reductions. And so what we looked at is maximizing the time that our administrators can work with our students during the school year. But when summer rolled around, yes, we needed a administrator in the building, but may, maybe not everyone. So we began looking at two-twelve contracts for our assistant principals. So a two-twelve contract is basically, I'm going to work two hundred and twelve days. Actually, it's not quite two hundred and twelve days because there are some holidays in there, but it was a much reduced schedule. And what that allowed for us to do is when you work a two hundred and twelve day contract for an administrator or anyone, you fall under the two hundred and forty day limit for vacation. So they've no longer received vacation pay and they, um, were reduced to two hundred and twelve days, which was significant savings over a two hundred and forty-seven day contract. It still allowed them, the teacher day, your teacher work here is a hundred and eighty-five days, so it's still allowed for more time than the teachers, but it allowed some time on the front end and some time on the back end after students left and teachers left to do the administrative tasks of getting prepared for the next school year. So we began looking at that change in schedule. And so we have quite a few administrators now in the, in the assistant principal roles that are now on two hundred and twelve day contracts. They were hired in like that. We then looked at, well, we need all of our OPs or all of our, we call them office personnel, all of our secretaries, if you will. Do we need our secretary on a year-round schedule? Do we need them for two, in, during the summer? Or can we maximize their time during the school year? Because of, our emphasis is to maintain the current support we have when the students are in the building and possibly try to tweak some of our summertime hours and pay. So we began hiring in our, um, secretaries or our OPs as we call them. They're either hired in at a two hundred and forty-seven day contract or they're hired in at a two hundred and twelve day contract. And the difference there is, we have, um, folks that are called OP fives, they serve as OP fives, office personnel class five. Very old terminology, but basically what an OP five's responsibility is, is they are the main secretary in each of our buildings. They serve as the financial secretary for the building, so they handle all the money that comes and goes out of the office. Before we had time clock, they did a lot of work around our payroll. They are our financial secretary or our lead secretary in every building. Every building has an OP five. We then have what are called OP fours. An OP four is basically the, the support secretary in the building, or they may work with guidance, or they may work in another role, but they're not the, what we would, what we used to call the principal secretary, they're more of a support secretary. They work with attendants, they do all, most of the answering of the phones, most of the greeting of students and helping assist when teachers come to the office. Okay, so those are kind of the classes we have. When, four years ago, we began working on this, we decided that we were going to bring in new administrators, APs, assistant principals, on a two-twelve contract. And we were also going to bring our OP fours, when they threw attrition, back on a two-twelve contract. And if it was an OP five, they would be brought in on a two hundred and forty-seven day contract. We tried, we felt like with attrition, we could maintain current levels, but slowly but surely, we could begin to save money over time. We're out four years and we have not seen, um, the savings that we are hoping for. And as we look forward to more and more deficit spending, it has now come back onto our radar. We've had some problems with maintaining people at a two, uh, two hundred and sixty day contract, and I'll be really honest with you about that. Administrators who work in the building or here in AO, that's why I said this was a kind of confusing thing, so I want to get a little back in history. So administrators that are currently working in, um, AO, our contracts were changed about six years ago, six, five or six years ago, to a two forty-seven, which means we worked two hundred and thirty-seven days and were paid for ten vacation, or holidays. Our secretaries are two hundred and sixty day employees, which means they work two hundred and thirty-eight days and are paid for twenty-two holidays. Okay, and I'm going to explain that a little bit more in the future. But what it, in, in essence means is they work one day when administrators don't work. Okay, so that has been problematic. Because as we've created calendars, we have secretaries coming in and reporting you to work and there are no administrators in the building. It not only makes them uncomfortable, it just doesn't make good logical sense. Okay? So those have been some of the problems and we have had trouble trying to coordinate and keep everyone on the same schedule, um, to make sure that everyone understands their calendars. Currently, we have about twenty-six different work calendars in this whole district. Okay? So it takes a lot, it's a lot to manage, it's a lot to keep track of. Everyone's on different schedules and different, or different schedules, if you will. Okay? So, so we've begun to look at this again. We've begun to look at, how can we maintain people by being more efficient in when we ask them to work? And is the work that they're doing and are the days that we are actually paying them valuable days? Okay? So we still have employees that will remain on a two sixty contract. So for example, our custodians. Our custodians are on a two hundred and sixty day contract. But here's the contract for them, and I will give you some handouts to show you a schedule of what it looks like. Our custodians and our maintenance personnel work two hundred and fifty days a year. They actually report to work two hundred and fifty days. They get paid ten holidays, the legal holidays required by, um, the Department of Labor. So they actually work two hundred and fifty days. They get paid ten holidays. The OPs that are on a two hundred and sixty day contract currently work two hundred and thirty-eight days and are paid twenty-two holidays. And you might say, well, there aren't twenty-two holidays in the calendar. There are not. There are not. There are ten that we are required to pay or that we do pay. The extra twelve days are Christmas and spring break. So while custodians report on Christmas and spring break, those breaks, they're actually reporting to work, they're actually getting paid for. Our OPs are not reporting to work, but are getting paid for. So that's really where the disconnect becomes. Okay? So they're actually working two hundred and thirty-eight days and being paid to not work or to be on holiday for twenty-two days. So when we look at adjusting their calendars, what we're really looking at is we're looking at maximizing the days while students are in session. But then on the Christmas break and the spring break, they're actually, will not report to work, but will not be paid. So that will be a difference. They will not be paid for those days. It will not impact students, it will not impact their building because they were never working the days in, anyway. And so while we were trying to do this through attrition and let it generally or naturally come about, we, we feel that we need to speed the process up to make sure that we get everyone maximizing time, um, when students are in session and when we actually need them. So when you look at the savings of doing this, because there are some, there are some savings, obviously, or we wouldn't be looking at it, it's approximately a hundred and four thousand dollars in just money paid for days teacher or, um, staff is not working. So a hundred and four thousand dollars would be approximately three to four positions. So if we had to look at cutting, if you would... backstory, and I want to show you what a calendar looks like, so you kind of have a vision of what the calendar looks like. And just for your reference, um, the reason, this is very complicated and very difficult to explain as I learned, because our staff in the past, I'm not sure how we got to this place, but in the past, staff, um, even OPs and even sourly, or hourly employees were given a yearly salary. So instead of saying to an employee, "You are an hourly employee, you make eighteen dollars and forty-eight cents," our secretaries were told, "You are, your annual salary is twenty-two thousand, one hundred dollars." So a few years ago, when we implemented a time clock system to track time, they weren't aware that they were really hourly employees, when in fact, they are hourly employees. Because they were always, they were always given a yearly salary. And so I think to them, they felt as if they were a salary employee, they shouldn't have to clock in. Well, according to the Department of Labor, they are truly hourly employees. And so now we give them a notice, we don't give them a salary notice that says, "This is your annual salary." We give them an hourly rate. So they have an hourly rate, times the amount of hours, times the amount of days worked. So I think that has been part of the confusion for folks is that, um, we're all on stretch pay, so our pay never looks different. Is everyone familiar with stretch pay?
No.
Okay. So what stretch pay is, is it, it allows, um, a district, and most districts do it, I don't know a district that doesn't do it, stretches your pay over the entire course of the year. So if I'm a teacher, I work a hundred and eighty-five days. I get paid based on an entire year instead of just the months I'm working. So it allows all of our folks to be paid over the Christmas, or over summer, when in fact, they're not working. Okay? So for our hourly employees, we keep their pay consistent. And so when your pay's consistent, and so the way we do that technically with the treasurer, she can probably explain in more complicated language than I am, but basically, they hold a little back out of everybody's pay in order to pay them over the summer. So if everyone has a consistent pay, it's called stretch pay. So stretch pay is confusing for folks who aren't in the school business, because I think we're probably the only, one of the only organizations that use stretch pay. But, um, and so people never really know what they make. It is like, I have no idea what I'm getting paid, because we're always holding a little back to pay them over the summer. So that has led to part of the confusion. Okay? So questions to this point, before I actually show you a calendar and show you how it, um, is going to, how it works on a calendar?
I think the other important thing to state that the community may not understand, or even employees in the district, teachers do not get paid to stay at home during spring break and Christmas. That's not part of their work calendar. They do not get paid for that. They're paid for a hundred and eighty-five days, a hundred and seventy-eight for students and, and service days. So when they're off at Christmas and they're off at spring break, they're not getting paid for those days. They work a hundred and eighty-five days.
And that's what I was trying to get at with the stretch pay. They're not being paid to stay home, but they're getting a consistent pay, so it looks like they're getting paid to stay home. But the pay is stretched, so we take their pay and we stretch it, so even when they're off, they're still not getting, or they're still getting paid, but it's not really paid for the holiday. That make sense?
And they get paid twice a month, basically?
Everybody gets paid.
For, for the full twelve months?
Correct. You can work nine months a year, you're getting paid for, you're getting paid over twelve months and you're getting twenty-four pays a year, and they're all pretty consistent. Maybe some multiple minor changes with deductions. But basically, your pay remains consistent. And so it allows people not to search for jobs in the summer unless they want to, because their pay is consistent.
Am I getting ahead if I say, is this going to help with the twenty-six different schedules?
Yes. But that's not the most, that wasn't, that wasn't what I wanted out.
Well, I, I think I struggled with it because, I mean, we were going with the attrition and it wasn't going fast enough. But when you take an employee that's making two hundred and sixty days a year and you're going to take them to two-twelve, that's a drastic cut in pay.
It is, and I'm very sensitive to that.
That's hard to take, you know? And, I mean, if we're going to cut, if we're going to cut those people then, you know, we got a lot of people around here making six figures that could take the cut and take too. So, you know, as a board member, I might have a hard time, uh, approving any administrative increases, as I sit on this board, that this is going to go down, that it seems like the, the people at the bottom are the ones that are always taking hits. And, I mean, it's almost like the sheriff of Nottingham, you know, the little guys pay and then the big people at the top are continuing to take it on.
When were these people informed, I'm sorry, Bob, when were these people informed, the, the OPs, that they were going to go through this process?
They have not. They, our intention was to share it with you tonight and share it with them tomorrow. This is not, this is not for being brought to the board as an action item at this point, it's for information only. But I didn't want to present this in front of a TV and have OPs perhaps watch it and not hear it from us first, so.
I know for a fact that there was an OP that was informed today.
Some were told today, correct. Some were told today because their principal, honestly, if I could meet with everyone at seven-thirty in the morning, I would have done that, but with calendars and schedules, some people don't start at seven-thirty. If I could have met with them as a general, as a whole, I would have done that.
Are you going to meet with them?
Their principals are meeting with them, or I am meeting with them. I had two meetings today as well with folks to talk about it. I asked the principals how they would like to handle that, and most of them said, "I have a great relationship. I would rather it come from me than from somebody else." So I gave them basically the outline of what the calendar will look like and any changes. Because some people have, as Bob stated, a more significant increase or decrease than others do, and there are some anomalies such as, if you're going from a two sixty to a two forty-seven, you, um, will maintain your vacation leave because you're in essence working a year-round schedule. And so those folks will continue to get vacation. Folks that are going to two-twelve will not be getting vacation anymore, but they will have July and August on. And so one of the things that we will have to do is to pay out on all of those vacations. So anyone who is in the situation of not earning vacation anymore, we will give them a one, a lump sum payment on their vacation that they have already accrued and that is still sitting in the bank. So that will be paid out. So every situation is a little bit different, and so that's why it's hard to have a conversation with an entire group of folks. But we did not want to have them necessarily hear it on the TV. We wanted them to hear it in person.
Well, you just said that the principal is going, took the option to explain it to the OPs. The only problem I have with that is they're going to still be angry about it, even though they have a good relationship.
Absolutely, absolutely. It was not meant to circumvent anything and it was not meant to say, "Oh, it'll go better with," because they wanted to share that information. Part of our leadership in the district office is to enable our principals, and so the question was asked. Several principals had asked me to come and deliver the message. Or either they don't feel comfortable delivering the message, they don't have a relationship, some of our new principals, so I will be delivering those messages. I'm meeting tomorrow morning at seven-thirty, tomorrow morning at eight, and tomorrow morning at nine-thirty with three different groups of folks. So it was left to their discretion. Most of our elementary principals or, or building principals in general have a longstanding relationship with their folks, and they would rather do it from them than from myself. And I trusted their judgment on that.
And we will continue to listen to what you have to say. Tonight is information. They're informed of what could occur and how it could occur. We can bring this back February fifth, and if you don't want the district to save a hundred thousand dollars with these three guys.
with these reductions, then we go back to the table and start planning other ways to do this. But I think you've all seen Amy's five-year forecast. We have taken cuts administratively in this building ourselves, we're down three from where we were. We continue to do things. This isn't about those on the low end of the total, those aren't, it's not about those on the top. This is about being fiscally responsible for our district. You have hard decisions to make, and they are your decisions. We only make recommendations, but it's not finger pointing at higher-level positions, because we decide that you don't need a secretary who cannot be put to work for the entire time of 260 days, when they can do the work we need, 212 days. This is about reality and being fiscally responsible to our clientele, which is our taxpayers.
So, I have a question. So, it sounds like there was a period of time where they were classed and properly, and there was maybe a presumption that they were exempt versus non-exempt. And with that, the Department of Labor certainly has guidelines, you have to be in supervisor position, and this and that. So, with that, and when that comes out of their benefits, are there other benefits that they were compensated for that would come along with the exempt position?
Yes.
And are there any other, are we fleecing all of this then? I mean, is something you have to look at all of?
No, the way the benefits have worked, and it really wasn't that they were misclassified, it was the way the salary was being recorded for them. Instead of, so every year, we give a contract, and instead of, and I don't know where this, I tried to track it back to when it started, I think it was when Hector was a pup, it started.
This was long before you came here.
Very long ago. It was started where they were reported salaries, and I know Amy, as soon as Amy started here, she's like, "Why am I seeing these salaries for unsal, not salaried employees, hourly employees?" And so, that began the conversation. I was brand new to the job, and ever since then, it has been accurate. But I can tell you, perhaps 20, 30 years, secretaries were reported as a yearly, it was given to them as a yearly salary instead of an hourly salary. However, if you go back and look at salary steps or salary schedule from those years, it was reported at an hourly rate. So, I don't know where it went wrong, but somehow, it was a misnomer that they were actually exempt personnel.
How many employees are going from 260 days to 212 with the figure that Bob used?
Five.
So, this is about five employees that are going from 260 to 212. How many are going from 260 to 247?
You were going to ask me that. I think it's more like 26.
And those employees going from 260 to 247, they're losing 13 days of pay?
Correct.
Over the whole year?
Over the whole year.
Which is basically the days that they don't work.
Correct.
And they have been paid for 22 days, which they do not work.
Well, I could accept that, it's just that these guys going from 260 to 212, that's, that's...
You mean, that's the five employees that we're talking about?
Well, wait a minute, I have a question.
Is that right?
So, you're one of those five employees?
Well, no, wait a minute, but am I, did I hear this wrong? Didn't we already do this to assistant principals?
We did do assistant principals, and we have many secretaries that are already working for us that are on this calendar.
So, assistant principals, which can be considered, so we're not looking at, we're attacking the low end, or however, there are assistant principals that were taken from this 247 days down to the 212.
And in the years...
Years ago, before I came here, contracts were reduced as well, to meet the 247. And then, my other question is, if I'm a custodian, how is it fair that all these years, we've had employees getting paid for 22 holidays, and I've only gotten paid for 12 for years? I'm in the building, I'm working hard, when everybody else is home, I'm for a holiday, and we've been paying people that aren't there, I mean, that...
We need to look at that too.
What if, I mean, if I were a custodian, I'd be really upset.
It is, because they are truly working 250 days.
Right.
And paid for 250. And that's been going on for, that's been going on probably forever as well.
But that breeds a, that breeds a, back home, when people, oh, they're getting paid, so, back home, I ever, and, you know, it's just an escalated problem.
Correct. So, I passed out some calendars to you. At the very top, I circled something that describes what the calendar is. So, if you don't mind, if you would look at Calendar 12B, 12D.
Before we go on, for the custodians, just as an FYI, as a former business manager, you can't do major cleaning, and you can't make major changes without students and staff getting out of the building.
No, no, I have...
So, that's why they're in there, and that's why they have those additional days, and that's why they're paid. The key thing to remember here is, where do our classified employees fall versus other classified employees? Where do our teachers' salaries fall versus others? Those are all middle to bottom, and that's administrators, teachers, classified are higher than either of those groups. So, it's not about individuals, it's about a company that is trying to make decisions on what will save us money, is what this is about.
So, 12B is the current calendar for the folks we're talking about that are on 260-day contracts. Now, I do want, there's a little misnomer with 260-day contracts, because as the calendar year changes, with each year, some years, that's a 261-day calendar, some years, it's a 262-day calendar, and some years, it's a 260 calendar. Well, it has never come up, because I truly don't believe folks understand how they're being paid. So, when we changed from last year with a 261-day calendar, and this year is, the actual calendar is 260, they did lose a day's pay, but it was because that's how the calendar fell, the world calendar, if you will. So, that calendar can fluctuate, okay? But this year is current calendar, and the way you read this, is any day there is a W there, is a work day and is a payday. Anytime you see an H, is a non-work day and is a payday, okay? So, at the end of each month, you will see, let's just look at July, 20 workdays, one holiday, okay? That holiday is truly a holiday, July 4th, okay? But I want you to look down to December, if you would. So, December this year, our OPs that were on a 260, worked 14 days and were paid for seven holidays. Well, most of us understand that a holiday is Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, so it could possibly be two holidays. They were paid for seven holidays. They're really not holidays, but that's the way the calendar counts them, they are non-work paid days. So, if you look, for example, on December 20th, you will see, I'm sorry, December 21st, it's not Christmas Eve, it's not Christmas Day, but it has an H down there. That's because they did not report to work, but they were being paid for that day. If you go to the 22nd, they did not work, but they were paid for the day. On December 25th, obviously, that is a holiday. On the 26th, it says holiday, but it was really a non-work payday, and so forth. Does that make sense to you, when you look at that?
And just not to open up a can of worms, do we have any other employees that get paid those days? I mean, do our bus drivers get paid on those days?
No one gets paid on those days unless they work, except, except our OPs. Because everyone's calendars have been changed to reflect this, except for our OPs, which is why I buy myself talk to you about it today, okay? No one gets paid for those days. Custodians work them, and they get paid for them, okay? So, grand total, if you look at the very back page, under the very bottom line, it says grand total, you will see their workday is at 238. Those are actual days they've come to work, and they've been paid for them. Next, you will see holidays, 22, okay? So, they are being paid for 22 holidays. Again, it's a little bit of semantics, but it's 10 holidays, and it's 12 unpaid, or 12 unworked paid days. Does that make sense? I wanted you to see that.
So, basically, you're just trying to basically get this to pay the employees that are working those days, and I can, like the bus driver or whatever, they get paid when they're driving the bus. They're not driving the bus on Sunday, if they don't have an extra thing. You're not paying them on a Sunday, you're paying them when they're driving the bus.
Correct.
And is this, basically, for these five employees going from 260 to 212, you're paying them for the days that they're working in the district?
Correct.
Got you.
Okay.
I just kind of want to simplify that, so everybody understands what...
Well, thank you for helping me explain it.
Okay, got you.
So, this is 12B, that's currently what they're working. The next one you should see is B12, okay? B12. So, we have quite a few secretaries that have been hired, and we like to refer to them as office personnel, but we have quite a few office personnel that has been hired under a B12 contract. You will notice the same kind of thing, but if you look down to December, December 21st, for example, you will see nothing on December 21st, or next to December 21st, okay? Why is that? That is a non-work, non-paid day, okay? Whereas, you saw our OPs on the other schedule had an H there, so they were paid for that day. These folks are not paid for that day, okay? So, that's where you start to see the difference in the pay schedules.
And explain again, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, this B12 is which employees?
The B12 is the, is the 247-day contract that we are proposing for all OPs, if that serves in this capacity.
But right now, we have...
Right now, we probably have 10 on this schedule, on this schedule, and we still have about 26 on this schedule, okay? So, for example, Chris McKee had to hire someone doing his office, his person came in on this schedule, the new 247. So, one of his secretaries in his office comes in, doesn't come in on the 21st, and doesn't get paid for the 21st, his other secretary doesn't come in on the 21st, but gets paid for the 21st, okay?
I'm sorry, you said the 12B, 27?
Around there. I don't quote beyond that. I know the five, because obviously, they're the ones that are taking a huge reduction and...
A bigger...
Yes, and I understand that, and I respect that. So, so, the new calendar, which is, what did I say? B12. So, you will see, that you will see days that have nothing on there, okay? That means that those are unpaid, non-work days, okay? So, for example, we said on the other calendar, that in December, there were 14 workdays and seven holidays. This calendar, there are 14 workdays and two holidays, because they are actually getting paid for two holidays, but there are five days in there that are non-work, non-paid days. So, if you look at grand totals on the back, so this is the calendar that we're proposing, they would work 237 days, and they would be paid for 10 holidays, so it's a total of 247 days, okay? You'll notice the difference in workdays between the calendars is one, one day of a reduction in work, but it equals 13 days paid. I know that was a lot, and I know it can be confusing, and you're going back and forth between calendars. If I could reemphasize anything, we are trying to work on helping reduce our costs, but not reduce service to children and families in our building, and yes, it is five people, and it is 26 people, and it hurts, and it doesn't feel good, and the meetings today have been hard for everybody involved, and I understand that. The other way of looking at it is, if we can save, for example, I don't know what the grand total, $120,000, we're looking at four positions that we don't have to cut or not fill. That, for us, that is the bottom line. It is personal, I get it, I understand that. But we're trying to look at efficiencies instead of cuts, just simply hacking positions away.
And I get that, I mean, I understand that, you know? I would much rather have a job than us coming in here, voting, and saying, "You four people, you know, you guys are gone," instead of reducing the contract. I get that, I mean, I understand it.
It's just hard, because it's hard to understand how this inequality is going on all the time. Like, how, how, I mean, I, I would struggle if I'm in the building, and I find out my person next to me, we work the same days, same time, or home the same time, in here for 20 years, you may get paid for those days, and I'm not... And we're doing that with assistant principals and principals as well, that's a part, and it's not their fault. I'm not saying it's the people's fault that they get paid, that they probably didn't even realize it.
Well, as I said, I think...
22 holidays should have been, been a flag, but, yeah.
And I think, you know, days of the past, I remember when administrators, not necessarily district, were always on 260-day contracts. That's just the way they looked, and there was always paid time off, those days, unfortunate, not unfortunate, those days are over for a lot of folks, that just simply taking a day off and getting paid for it, it just doesn't exist anymore. But it is hard, it's personal, and it's hard.
And the decisions aren't going to get any easier, we will continue to bring tests to you. There's 10 to 12 projected teachers, if you were going to hire them, and I get into my update, we're not going to be hired because of the lack of enrollment. It's very difficult. We have 1,200 employees, it's definitely texture of HR, and Amy and I are in charge of it. It's very difficult when you have 1,200 employees, but it's got the company, but it doesn't make it easier, and it doesn't, you don't want it to make the individual who's associated with whoever we have to talk to feel bad. It's very difficult for me when teachers, we lost two really good teachers last year, we went to another district, we got a $10,000 rate, where it replaced either position.
You have to understand something here, the community that I talk to, and the folks that I talk to on a regular basis, I reemphasize what Bobby said, that you have administrators that are making six figures, and then, all of a sudden, some of these people are fighting for their lives under hourly wage scales. You see the, they're, you understand that there's angst, anger. I mean, if I said to you, "You gotta take a pay cut, and you're only going to be paid for so many days."
This is a personal towards staff, if you want.
No, it's not.
It's for me and my recommendations, so I don't want you to take it out personally, I'm not taking it personally.
I'm not, I'm not taking it...
It would be all of us, so...
It's not, it's not personal.
I know, I know the community very well, we know the people, we've already put faces and names with them. We know how this is going to affect. But if you, as a board, feel that we are making too much, then you need to, that's your job.
But here's the other thing, as a board member, and I agree with you, Joe, I mean, if I was one of those five people, or close to one of those, just one of those five people that I say I don't even know, yes, I mean, that, that is, would be very upsetting. On the flip side, we were just explaining, and I'm kind of embarrassed to think, all these years on the board, I had no idea that we had some employees getting paid their days off when the majority of our employees were not, and I don't think we're in the business to pay employees when they're not working, we can't afford to do that. So, as board members, we've just been explaining a discrepancy. It is our job now, not to go out there and fire up these people that are already upset, but to try to explain, "Do you realize you are getting, we've been paying you for however many years you've been here, it's not your fault, I'm not quite sure whose it is, it's kind of irrelevant at this point, but we've got to make this more across the board." When we're in a mode, and I lived through the $13 million that we had to cut, and it was awful, but we're, but we've got to watch everything, I don't see how a board can justify paying somebody 22 holidays when everybody else is getting 10 or not getting any. And it's our job to explain it, and if it's our relative, or if it's our neighbor, we can be compassionate about it, but we're not doing our job if we don't explain, "Look, something's messed up here, it's wrong, but we've got to fix it." And, I mean, I just think, we can't be out there roiling everybody up, we've got to explain that.
And how quick did you, how quick did you notice that, when you, what was, I mean, at some point, I mean, is there, are there, are there other things that we need to get in front of, that may be off the radar, that we can talk about later, but, I mean, I'm all for bright sides and, and young days at work, I'm all for, as we're saying, but if there's other things out there that we need to fleece much tighter to find, and we need to put after short-term, I mean...
Well, we keep looking for efficiency and analyzing everything, because when you're spending $3 million more than you're bringing in in a year, and 80% of your budget is personnel salary, it's a lot of difficult decisions ahead of us, and try to run that in. So, as a ministry team, you have to be looking at programs and...
So, as an administrative team, we're looking at programs and trying to determine, determine investment, determine investment anywhere that goes in here so that we can maximize student achievement, but still stay within the balance there.
Hey, Mary, are you crunching the numbers on these? Well, I would like to see, I'd like to see, we're at 104,000. But I'd like to see what we would be at if you took those five people and put them on the B-12 also. Then what was the difference? How much more are we gaining or losing by moving those people to the 247 also as opposed to taking them all the way back to 212?
Stephanie has to worry on this, does she know this spreadsheet? Does she will be able to put two over two percent, show you the numbers?
But if, if, if the, if the buildings don't need the coverage, the buildings don't need coverage, I mean, so putting them to that base, I mean, I, I forget. I think there needs to be, I don't know, we can make some kind of restitution for this situation, I don't know. But if the building doesn't need the coverage, the building doesn't need coverage.
That's why, I mean, that's why you go from 260 down to 212.
Exactly.
Those 38 days or those 48, 38 days, whatever it is, we don't need them in the buildings doing that, taking their own job. Is that correct? That's why I understand.
That's why we made elementary assistant principals 200. That's why we made assistants to high school 212 because we don't need them in the building. And if they were paying for someone within him from other districts, you know.
And, and, I mean, times have changed in the last 15 or 20 years. I mean, like you say, people were getting paid for not coming to work, I mean.
This isn't the first time we've done this. It's all over and it's over the last two years.
Sure. And I just, I mean, I think, I think you're wrong in your right that was going on and, and I get it, it's tough to swallow, but, I mean, we, we're in deficit spending. We've got to cut somewhere and this is a start.
And, and, yes, and like I said, this is part of a bigger plan that we are, we are looking at every single time we need, where can we find efficiencies. I don't believe when you do have a budget of 80% of your budget is personnel, this is not going to be the only thing we're looking at. We continue to look at it. Obviously, we want student achievement to remain and we're on the upswing, we want to remain on the upswing, so we don't want to cut things that are going to necessarily impact student achievement. So that's why we're looking at things first that will not affect that and that will kind of bring everyone into the same. So if you took, if you took them to a 247, there are administrators out of the building. So what are, what is a productivity if your administrator's not there and you're there? Their assistant principal, they're often the, the support secretary for the assistant principal. Principal, assistant principal's not there and so now you have folks in your building that you're not necessarily getting, you go where you're going for your job from.
Yeah, most are on a school line, maybe, but it is a good try. I mean, I, we have to brighten that, that's for sure. I, I am, I am glad that everybody is very passionate and sensitive. I mean, we, I've worked in organizations where it's not and they would take a slash and not pay twice and.
Well, I mean, these are real people and real places and it's, it's.
Not only they're real people, but they're also your first point of contact to all of your internal customers and all your external customers.
I'm not just disagreeing with you, but if, if we're not going to have, you know, if one of the ways of cutting is we cut back our ministers, we don't have them in the building, then, I mean, that is kind of an analogy. You don't have a bus driver, you don't have school. So if that's the way we have to, I mean, and that's what we're doing with all new hires. And, and, and it's not just OPs. If, if, if this was just OPs and we're just slamming this, but, I mean, we've been doing this with assistant principals and I've made new hires principals, correct? And, and so, it is across the board. I'm just shaking my head over that. I just can't, I mean, for us.
Well, I think the whole thing is new, new hires is one thing because you know what you're coming into. As we go from 260 to 212, that's a big hit.
It is, it is a big hit. But 22 holidays getting paid for however many years you've been here, when over half of those you didn't work and you got paid and nobody else did? Add those figures up in time, see how much money they've made over all these years when we had a three-year wage freeze or nobody got raises or anything. I mean, and again, I, I'm not, I mean, it, it's not about the, personally, the people because they didn't even go. But we know now, we've got to do the right thing. I mean, I can't look at any other employee knowing that I'm, we're paying, we've been paying people that aren't, aren't working. That, I mean.
And as I said, we have people in the same office that are on two separate calendars that are working side by side every single day until we get to that 238 day. One person's working, the other person is not. The other person's getting paid all through the holiday, this person is not. So, as I said, stretch pay doesn't feel, make it feel like that, but in reality, it is like that.
This has also been a plan we've rolled out to the administrators for two years. They've been aware of the reductions we're going to. That we had a conversation with the secretary of our offices today in 2:00. We knew this was coming, this is the first time we've heard this. What happens is when people are put in positions where you no longer need a 247 day, that comes the hardest part because you're in a 212.
And, and just for an example, we do have two employees that have volunteered. They don't want to work the summers anymore. They're of that period in their life where they want the summer off. And so they have offered to take a position so that they can get less days. Because you have to also realize with a 212-day contract, you're off close to June and July. And so it is a time for either time for your family or seeking other employment. So, I had someone say in a meeting today, "Well, I can just get a job in the summer. I can just work the summer." Not ideal, I know, and not, doesn't make it all right and fancy and feel good, but I do think people, some people can see a summer line if there is one.
Well, I do think too, to the point of, we all know our teacher's pay is to the bottom. And we try and try to see what we can do. We made an adjustment with bus drivers and the subpay because it was a necessity. But it sounds like our OPs aren't near on the close scale as our teachers are compared to other districts.
Correct.
They're in the upper, probably upper 10 there. So, and essentially, we, we pay our, our OPs more than the average district. And so it's, I mean, we have to look at that too.
Can I make a comment about that? That we're in the top 10 or probably 10th in the, as far as teacher wages and they settled the contract, I believe it was 222, is that correct?
3.7544.
Okay. Well, what you have to understand here-
We're not the top, we're not nobody's senior in the top.
Okay, so we're, at one time, we were ranked 23rd or somewhere around there.
And we're still approximately there.
And now we're right towards the middle? Please understand, we're going to lose some teachers here because Mason's Union, Lakota's Union, Oak Hill's Union, some of these other districts, they're going to have to deal with those teacher unions. And if we are 12th or what, I, I don't know what, what are we ranked? We're going to be back to 23rd.
What are we ranked right now?
Amy, do you have the current specific kind of the 12? We were around 23rd and with this rate, it did get us to the middle, but then not being everybody else, so we can really, between this makes your, your side. We're going to go right back down. And with our forecast, we're definitely spending, we're not able to sustain being in the middle. And we're currently, and we have been losing teachers to other districts.
Absolutely.
So, we're trying to increase who we can retain and reward and recruit teachers to our district and at the same time, we're definitely spending 80% personnel and we're looking for efficiencies because we don't have just staff to go with. So this will be four positions. We have four positions for Amy. We think 3 million, we're 120,000, 3 million has a lot of provisions that we've got in our district. We're just now trying to raise and then last trying to judge it out, we can't sustain that yet. So we have to find efficiencies through the district. Our revenue is already, state revenue is flat, our current rate is flat. There are challenges. We want to cover that increase revenue in 2012. Renewal levy, we're just renewing, what we're receiving.
That would be a big period, because we have to be able to take expenditure, there's no other way around it. But across quite a, the student services piece, like the psych leadership, lack of pay, exceptional close attention, that nobody's being, stuff unintended, you know, or anything like that, which, I mean, it's pretty tough on, but it's probably going to be a little bit.
Pam, she wanted to clarify this part of that, so we're down to student services. The next item is a student service item, it's harassment, intimidation, bullying, semi-annual report. Dustin Gary is going to come up.
Good evening. Good evening. I'll take a deep breath for a moment. A lot of everybody's next presenter on that. Just to create a little space, I'm going to take my student services hat off for a second and put my community hat on just for a second. I am in the community, I go right into our real school, my kid all go to our school. And I want to take a moment to make sure that the board recognizes that our next board meeting is actually, this probably is the last board meeting, should be retirement soon after that. I don't want that people unnoticed. I know we'll talk about it at that meeting, but to give you a chance to prepare for that. And so as a community member, I want to say thank you and, and I want you to hear me loud and clear, I just shake your head to me. My kids go to these schools and leadership is important. And, and you've done an amazing job maintaining a very firm, fair, consistent office as you establish policies and procedures and processes in an ever-changing world. When you began the job that I'm now walking into, it is not the world that we live in today. There are things that have come along that you could never anticipated having to make policy around. Who knew that you would ever have to write a policy around a drone flying over a football field to try and to record our plays in preparation for a, a state, a state football game? Who knew you'd ever be a policy like that? So you've done an exceptional job and as a community member and a customer and someone who has enjoyed having kids go to very safe schools, I want to say thank you for being the moral compass that you have been through all your career. So I want to say thank you very much on behalf of me. And I will have a chance next week, next, next time to say this, but as a community member, I just want to say thank you. I really appreciate all that you've done.
Well, that reminds me.
I also have a UUD coupon for you. Free, free ice cream cone. An absolute turkey that we use. But as assistant director of student services, I want to make sure you get a chance to use that. I know that morally you've never wanted to use those coupons because they are for the children, but today you get to enjoy that ice cream cone. I'm attached. So, to put my student services hat back on, you have as a part of the school board website or process, a document that talks about harassment, intimidation, bullying. I want you just a moment to tell, you what that really looks like if you don't have access to it, do a hard copy. Give you a nod or a shake, let me know if you have a side on it. I got a thumbs up, Joe? Yeah. I guess I probably give over. That was good. So this form is a reflection of times in which our parents or students have submitted a form that looks just like this. This is an harassment, intimidation, bullying form, it's a state level form that we're required to have, that our customers use, that we're thankful to have as a communication tool. So what you see there is a report of the times in which you have forms submitted. And then in the next column, you'll see the times in which the investigation has proven that, yes, we did see bullying as a part of this. I do want to separate the conversation from mistreatment and bullying. Low numbers in the verified allegations does not mean that we've all been wonderful to each other. There is a clear definition around bullying, a lot to do with multiple occurrences. And, and all the time, as a building principal, as of November 1st, I was receiving these documents around a one-time occurrence. Yes, there was mistreatment. Yes, we investigated. Yes, we did do diligence around consequences, students received consequences. Yes, we circled students up in a restorative manner, so we had a conversation and we did that work. Our, our principals do that work when our customers walk in the door. This year, at Wyde Wyde is there and under Kevin's leadership now, we explored kind of a new procedure around the HIV form. I'm sure for years and years in the year, you've seen a lot of zeros and the zeros and ones over the course of, you might say, how do we have 9,000 students that have zero allegations and zero verified cases? That just doesn't make any sense. So what was happening, I'll just be honest with you, for my four years as a school principal, was you handled that at the door. So the parent would come in and say, "My student's being mistreated, can you help me?" Absolutely, and we took care of it and, and we did our internal process of investigation, the circle up, all that kind of stuff, it's always happening. That is not a reflection of times changing that you see some different numbers in a couple boxes. We're changing some procedure because we want to be more upfront and we also want to make sure that we're doing all our process in all of our abilities. So why don't explore this at a deeper level to say, at the point the customer walks in and says, "Hey, I'm being mistreated," we hand them a form that doesn't stop the conversation and actually starts the conversation. So that's why you might see in the area under Wyde, the higher number of allegations is because that's a part of our process. All our secretaries, our assistant principals and our principal, then Wendy and then now Kevin, were handing those forms out to help get this thing going. You're trying to explore, right? What does it look like when we could put this on the front line rather than on the back line when it just shows that we weren't expecting it? And so you see that next semester, you'll see that actually across the board with all of our abilities to put this on the front line of customers coming to the door. What won't change is the way that we, we handle our customers and we'll take care of our customers. I will tell you, every principal, every building in our district takes care of their folks when they walk the doors and say, "Hey, my child's being mistreated. Let me help you, let's work through a process and let's see if this actually gets to the point of bullying or if it is truly just mistreatment." Rare is the occasion where someone says, "That didn't happen." That is not the conversation we have with our customers. It is, okay, what else happened? What was replaced? Do we have a back and forth? How can we now move forward? And so, I did want to give some description as to why you might see a weird line there under Wyde that says, "Boy, that looks different. What changed?" It's a procedure change. And you're actually going to see that second semester across the board, that particular procedure change, where we're seeing a bit more of that piece. So, that is the report. It's a semi-annual report, we'll do it again in June. I'm open to questions about anything regarding that, the process or anything like that.
I, I'd like to comment you on the procedure change because you're right, 9,000 students, everything is impeachy all the time. And I think lots of times when you see this report, it appears, you know, because I know just in, you know, email or something, I might get, you know, somebody, whatever, and you pass it off. But this, I think, shows that there are people coming in, there are issues, but we are handling them. So, it'll be interesting to see them.
I spoke with Jennifer about this, this evening because I was looking at how we had this many and really not paying them out. I wanted to know what the criteria was that they didn't know. And she showed me an addition that Cincinnati Public School just put on their website, which is a bullying.
We, I'm exploring that now. So I actually, this is test runs with our Google documents and processes. I want, how did Google or actually create an incident notification to the principal or to me where it's not a, did you check on it? I'm just, I'm a half step away from making sure that notification comes through where it's free. Now, look, just spend money or subscribe to another subscription or have another list that parents have to sign up for to get that notification also. But it's, it's a way, I'm trying to find a way before us to do it through our current system that creates an incident notification on a half step away. Just haven't found the right tech yet.
Just out of curiosity, like with mine, just to say, Pleasant, Mel and Wyde, the ones that do have multiple, are any of those, do we know, I mean, could that be an incident that's the same to kids or the same if doing something multiple times?
Everything's possible. I learned a lot about being a principal, particularly, don't ever say something is not possible because it always is possible. Very much, very possible. Typically, if you have the multiple occurrences, that's where it lands, if the, how the verified bullying process. So, to go from each case I can, I can show you, I had every one of them. You can take a look because they're, you're welcome to it. But yes, that is, that is possible. At the end of the result, and one of the things that we really want to explore, they should have outlined in communication, there's two letters that are templates that we use when there is a, an allegation that verified or an allegation that says, "No, this wasn't bullying." And, and there's key lines in those that say, "We're not saying this didn't happen," and I'm paraphrasing, "And we're not saying there wasn't mistreatment. We're saying it's not of this caliber, but we also want you to know that we did-" principal now in my per position, reporting is the most important piece for us. And I can tell you, scenario to scenario where you'll get an initial report in September, you'll do that legwork, you figure it all out, you get it at a one-time occurrence, you tell them everything is good. And for a principal, no news is good news, because there are other news that isn't good, as you can imagine. And so six, seven weeks later, you'll hear a report that says, "Boy, it never stopped, and we didn't know." We all want to know, we all want to be a part of, of solving the problem. I've never spoken to a principal who says that, "Oh, my gosh, I just didn't care about that." No, of course they are chasing after these things, but reporting is a huge piece for us and a, a trust factor with our students and our, our parents. And, and sometimes it's just getting to that second level. I often tell parents that 85% of the time, a parent or an adult intervention will stop mistreatment in its tracks. At least 15%, and I'm not naive to 15%, but a second occurrence, a second report, you get another 90% of, of time that it doesn't go past that, out of the 15. So now you're really getting down to a case or two a year where you actually get to a third level of mistreatment if it's reported, and that's the big piece. We get often blamed for things that aren't reported. Why haven't you done more about it? But goodness, we didn't know a whole lot, uh, what was happening, uh, because, you know, this is good news, uh, definitely because of a lot of this stuff. So ultimately, um, the thing I can tell you is, it is letting us know as often as it happens with details, um, that really serves us in a great way. And that's a lot more than you were asking for, but I'm just telling you it's true the job, uh, because I've certainly been in those, those steps. I don't want to prolong the conversation with you. If I have more questions, I'm happy to answer them about this report or anything to do with this, uh, what I will always do about the student.
Thank you. Amy, could you put up your building update? All right, for my update, I wanted to give you some updates on the building, redistricting, so on and so forth. It'll be up here in the overhead. If you can go to the next screen. All right, first thing I want to talk to you about is the five schools that will eventually become three new schools. As planned, Taylor, Struble, and P R E will be demolished. Not as much of a hurry on P R E as there is the other two. There is a big time hurry, um, and we are working on plans to make sure that the teachers are packed and ready to go prior to their last day before Memorial Day. Reason being is we need the schools empty, we need the schools demolished, and then we need parking lots under place. So that will be a big push. P R E being on Hamilton Avenue, not as concerned, but it eventually will be demolished also. We're still trying to land lease it, we're still trying to sell the property, we're looking at options. Welch, we are trying to sell or lease to outside agencies. Right now, we're currently talking to, um, an E S C about some of the programs they can bring in. Um, if this would happen, we would lease it out to them or sell the property to them. Either way, it would get taken care of and maintenance of the property completely off our wills. Lastly, if we cannot do any of those things to the Welch property, it will be demolished, and it will be reseeded, and all the driveway entrance will be taken away.
How much time will we give that before we decide that time to demolish it?
We are currently talking to folks, as we have been, ongoing. Daryl, you have any updates on where we remember conversations?
We remember them about a week ago, and so we're trying to get the right people and the people to have the right conversation.
But we have budgeted money to demolish the building, we just don't want to uptake any care. So if it doesn't work with us leasing out the building or selling the building, then we demolish it and then try to sell it to a real estate person who put a house on there. Anything we can do with Beavis property, this property, and Pleasant property to get businesses or increase enrollment in our district and new families. Um, Wygle is, majority will be demolished. If you know where the front entrance is, think about the, all of, if you're looking at the front entrance, all the way to the right will be demolished. We are going to save the gym area for rentals, and we'd like to renovate the cafeteria so that special education department could possibly be brought over here with us at the administrative offices. What that does is it allows Houston to stay open as a preschool. It is a central location. We are afraid if we move Houston, like we talked about at one time over at Wygle, nobody from the north end of the district will be able to get over to the preschool. So that is a big concern for us. The other thing that Chris is starting to look into is a possibility of expanding some of Houston and completely demolishing Wygle, and then moving administrative offices over to that area. So that one is, we're still going through the plans, we're working with S H P to try to figure out what to do, but we do have options there. I just want to give new board members and those of you who have heard previous discussion of the data, I want to.
Are you up with, uh, Beavis to get price tag on that?
Beavis is ready to go to V S O L, so working with realtors, trying to get somebody to purchase it, not having much luck at the moment.
So what you do have a price tag on?
Not yet, no.
Oh, okay. What do you do, let me know.
Are you interested in mine?
No, no, that's, that off. All right, next slide, Amy. All right, so expected savings by combining schools. I just wanted to touch a little bit on this, because sooner or later, the community's going to ask, "What savings did you have, have going from five to three?" So the first thing we have is the savings of 10 to 12, 10 to 12 certified teachers. We have projected a need of 10 to 12 teachers at kindergarten. By combining schools, we have been able to place staff accordingly based on enrollment projections, and will not need to hire a 10 to 12 additional. So we have budgeted 500, um, to 600,000 for that. We now will have a savings of 500 to 600,000 because we are able to, um, move our, our folks internally. Classified staff will remain approximately the same. The problem with classified staff is they're usually based on student needs, so I'm talking about classroom aides, individual aides, um, and folks like that. So depending on our, our, our enrollment and what our S W D students with disabilities needs are, that could change, but right now, we think it will stay basically the same. Custodians, there will be a savings. Um, it, it is a number that is based upon an industry standard for a square foot for a building, cleaning, but we do see some savings there. Food service, a very small savings. Gas electric, everybody's going to say, "Aren't you going to save a lot on gas and electric? You're more efficient, you've got better buildings, more sunlight, don't need to heat as much." Well, remember, we went to air conditioning an extra for buildings. So what savings we might see there is probably going to be eat up in that part. Transportation, we have no more midday routes, it should show some savings. I hope this also gives us the ability to also look at picking up more students, because as I've talked before, we do have some streets that aren't fun for kids to have to cross. But those are some of the savings. Redistricting. The goal was to make sure that all new elementary schools were full at capacity in August 2018. In order to make this happen, our second goal was that even if we look at redistricting, and this is key for our parents to hear, no matter what elementary boundaries we move these students, they will still go to the same middle school and the same high school they've always been projected. So if some kids get moved from Colrain now and end up at the new Struble school, they still go to the same middle school, they still go to the same high school. If some folks that are in the P R E area are moved to the Taylor area, they still go back to the same middle school, they still go back to the same high school at all points. What we have done, and what I will start passing out, going around and talking about, is what our redistricting looks like. So we have reduced Colrain Elementary from 957 students currently to 610, 347 reduction. Our new school will start the year with the enrollment projection, the P R E will have around 847, Struble 861, and Taylor 874. Monford Heights will start the year at 666, down from 710 current. These numbers include transfers that have already been granted. We'll do our best to get all students back that are homeschooled, but we still understand that there's hardship transfers. So if parents can't fill out hardship transfers, um, if grandma and grandpa live across the street from one school, yes, we can grant those changes. But these new schools offer every accommodation needed for any student, so we shouldn't have to be transferring kids across the district. That should save in transportation needs also. Um, the last thing we did is we made sure we looked at the demographics for the new elementary building based on enrollment, not yet knowing the makeup of our new kindergarten class. So, um, what we have made sure is that we have an equal amount of S W D, white students, African-American students, V S L students, and economically disadvantaged students. And the moves we made kept these pretty much within one or two percentage points each at the three new buildings. It also kept Colrain where they normally are at, and Monford Heights where they're normally at, but we, I, I feel like we're at a good place with the way they've been divided up. So prior to the meeting tonight, I put a calendar in front of you, I'm sorry, not a calendar, a notification that will go home with parents starting tomorrow and Wednesday that talks about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different meeting dates and the times to the right of where I would go to each elementary school or Darrell, because some of them are on the same night. And we will talk to them about redistricting. What we will do is tell them the plan, show them the maps that Matt and Chris put together for me today. It shows what the old boundaries are, and then it shows what the new boundaries are that we put together, and then we can show, and we have magnified the streets that will be affected and what new school that we'll go to. We'll then ask for feedback, we'll then ask for input, we'll come back to the table as a large group and have another discussion. They're going to be asking, "What about starting times?" We know we need three tiers for transportation, so before I can guarantee starting times, one, remember our original goal was to lengthen the elementary day to the same length as the middle school and high school day, which was 30 minutes less. So by lengthening the day, that will mess with our tiers a little bit, but then I need to go have six or seven conversations with our brokerels and our taxpayers also in this district, and talk to them about adjustments and possible starting times. So I will be hitting ground running, trying to get a lot of information. Once I have all the meetings, I'll be able to give you a small update at the work session on 2/26. I won't be done. I may be able to give you a small update on 2/5, let you at least know how the, um, the other ones have gone. But we will be doing these updates, we've got to get the word out. I think the key for some of our parents is they think when you redistrict our elementary, and actually Darrell and a couple others have got some phone calls, "My property's worth more if I go to Colrain High School than Northwest High School, so you're not going to move my high school." I'm not sure I agree with that statement, but that's what reception is out there. Um, and so they want to make sure that the feeder's going to stay clean. And what we can tell them is the feeder will be clean, and your kid gets to go to a state that are branded elementary. So the other goal that folks aren't really thinking about that I'm bringing up is we've been collecting OFCC funding, so we've built a, a bank of about 17 million. Instead of building a 15 to 1600 K grade campus, we're now looking at 11 to 1200 kid campus K grade. So that should be significant savings for the district. Hopefully, if we can get our, our cuts and, um, hopefully funding can improve in a couple places, we won't have to put out a bond levy to finish that building, and we can build it with OFCC funds. That's the ultimate goal. So those are the updates. Be glad to answer any questions you have, but these are the meeting dates. Um, with the board meeting changed, you can say hello to Darrell and goodbye to Darrell, because he'll probably be at Wygle that night, um, but he can choose to come back for a few months. But we've got, we can't just change meetings, we've got to do these, and then we have a board meeting, we're doing what we got to do. But sooner we get the word out, the sooner we get feedback.
Absolutely. Do they have any questions? At this time, we have community comments, if there's anybody out in the, there that would like to have a question about something we discussed tonight.
I have a quick question for you guys.
Okay.
Is everybody looking at me anyway? Um, how do you all handle collections for things like school fees, um, student, um, organization fees, those sorts of things? How, how is that handled?
Amy, what did I say?
We enter them into Dazzle, and so the easy pay parents can go into easy pay and pay their fee, or a minute pay to bill, and they just go leave into Dazzle.
But I guess what I'm getting at is, in terms of collections, what are we doing as a district to collect those funds from people that haven't paid? The reason why I'm asking that, I know standard collection practices are typically 30, 16, 90 day, but like, once a year, that's worth them. I personally pay my student fees, my daughter's fees back in August. Somehow, I don't know, the check out laws, what happened, but I received her report card and then like a little nasty grab for $22.55. I understand that things get lost, I understand things happen. That's a whole separate issue. My issue is, that is money that was owed back in August. It is now January. This is the first I'm hearing about that. So in my mind, having a business background, served on well over 100 boards, I understand how organizations work very well. And what I'm not understanding is, we have deficits, you know, we have gaps that we need to fill. What are we doing to co, what, I, I mean, we talk about inefficiencies and efficiencies, what are we doing internally to collect money that is owed? I mean, that's, that's a concern.
Actually, I got interrupted for just a second, because this part of the meeting is only about questions that have been talked about during the meeting, so I don't know, Amy, do you want to get with her?
I mean, did we just, we just talked about this? So we just, we just had a big presentation about deficits, about reductions, about costs all affected.
Okay, I just want to keep it tied so that we don't start.
Yeah, I understand, I understand all that, Pam, but, I mean, I understand all that, but I think this is a very important issue, and it definitely correlates to budgets and deficits and cuts, and, and it's, it's a valid legitimate concern.
It is a discussion we have yearly. Um, usually by the time students can anticipate graduation or homecoming or prom, unless all fees are paid, they are cumulative from elementary to middle school. The state also has a Senate bill that is in place that, uh, we no longer can hold records because students owe fees. So all they have to do is move from a district, and by law, we're not allowed to hold records, so they move and the fees never get paid.
What I'm saying, like, I mean, my issue is, I was never even, as a parent, I was not even notified. I paid the bills. I mean, that's not even the issue. The issue is, if we have parents that don't even realize that they have a balance, I mean, there's opportunities for collecting funds, and that's what I'm getting at. Are we, don't everything have a hand to collect?
I'll have Jenny talk to Javel, find out why there was miscommunication, and we'll take care of that. It's a personal issue that we can address.
Well, no, because I'm wondering, I mean, do we have a district-wide policy, whether, where we're collecting? That's my, my question. Are, are there collection policies in place to collect only with that? I'm just asking a question.
No, it's, it's more the high school graduation.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we move into board member comments, Joe?
No, I, I, I taught a class for the first time in a run of years, and the one comment I made to the students, because I thought they were engaging, is, I'll get out, was the fact that I taught Walnut Hills High School for 27, about 35 years, and I said, "You know the difference between Walnut, Colrain High School?" And they were just kind of thinking, "Okay, they're smart kids." No, it's a name. It's just a name. We have some very, very intelligent, energetic kids in that school, and I see no difference when I was teaching at Walnut Hills, to your kids at Colrain, and that's all we know.
Uh, speaking of Colrain High School, uh, Joe and myself were there at the basketball game Friday night. They recognized, uh, Colrain High School football team for their accomplishments over the year, and, uh, we got some pictures, uh, sent them to, and a great, uh, for the team and, uh, and, uh, the coach, so, uh, send those to you.
I'm a small guy.
First, I just want to thank you right for the board recognition. Let's read the cards on Friday, so started them, that was just amazing. I'll be praying to you guys, talking to the employees, but it's good to be able to so we will, I'll definitely be supported with that, and, um, it's, uh, it's, it's good work here.
Yeah, Stephanie, I just want to thank you, um, for going through that, and that's tough. You know, people have jobs and cut days, and it's, you're in an O-line position, so I appreciate that, um, you know, sometimes our jobs are tough, and sometimes you gotta, you know. You know, let everybody have their say, and, but bottom line, we're debt spent. We've got to get a hold of that, we've got to do something about it. And I think that's, the, the public needs to know that. I appreciate it.
I just want to take a minute to, um, to thank everybody who thanked us. It's, these cards are the best. We love the poster. Want to thank Monford Heights for the song, um, Wyatt Middle School, Houston Early Center, um, Colette, I know you're always a force behind that, so really appreciate that. I love when she started doing the books. And since we just had our second grandson that decided to come six weeks early this Wyde of Middle School, Houston Early Center, Coletta, I know you're always a force behind that, so really appreciate that. I love when she started doing the books. And since we just had our second grandson that decided six weeks early this week, will someday be a student at Monford Heights, I just can't wait to see if the wind, those two little boys come home with one of these books with a sticker in the front of it, that 'll be, that'll be pretty cool. I'd also like to thank you out back as you're leaving for always coming to the meetings and asking questions. Oh, I'm sorry. I said, I also want to thank you too for always coming, asking questions. I wish we had more parents sitting here, so appreciate it.
Probably will after this meeting.
Yeah. Good luck getting home, it sounds like it's.
Thanks, yeah, very much. See you guys.
It's a forum. So with that, I think next meeting, I sort of appreciate everything that Coletta and you definitely did miss. Just even from back when you were the assistant principal at Colrain Middle, when some boys wanted my umbelts to make those gifts so they couldn't use the excuse they didn't have umbels before, hands on, for me. Those little things, but she always goes, I'm actually liable to do it, so I appreciate it. We've been spending a lot of time in it, so I hope you do check that off the list and run those meetings. I believe we have a motion to move it to executive session to consider the appointment appointment dismissal, this is a motion, a motion for compensation of a public employee or official.
Come in.
Motion passes by, it's zero. We will move into executive session, there won't be any action, so when we come back, it's just future. Everybody get home safe, it's out of the open.